All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Let's all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we have a roll call of the officers, please?
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Rubio.
Here.
Bowen.
Here.
Doyan.
Here.
Locurs. Riley.
Here.
All right, the agenda, I do have one thing to add. It's a request from the St. Clair County Kennel Club that we adopt a resolution regarding their request for a charitable gaming license. This is similar to what we did for someone a couple months back. I can't remember who it was.
Kind humans, human kind.
Yes, exactly. So, that's what that is. The state of Michigan just wants us to recognize that they are a valid organization. So, we'll add that as letter Q, uh, letter R, sorry.
Almost forgot my alphabet.
All right, any other changes? All right, we'll entertain the motion to approve as amended.
I'm in for motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
We have motion, we have, we have support. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There and none that motion carries. Moving on to the minutes from the March 4th meeting. Questions on the Questions on any of that? Alright, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as published?
I make a motion to approve those minutes from the March 4th meeting as per J.
I'll support.
Alright, we have motion, we have support. Any further discussion on that? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? There are none that motion carries. Moving on to consent agenda and communications. Showed disbursements of ninety-five thousand four hundred eighty dollars and ninety-five cents. Questions on any of those? Alright, do we have motion to file reports and pay the bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda communications in the amount of ninety-five thousand four hundred eighty dollars and ninety-five cents and pay the bills.
Alright, motion by Treasurer Jackson. Do we have support?
Support.
Support by Trustee Riley. Any further discussion? Roll call vote on that, please.
Jackson?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Musikowski?
Yes.
Grubel?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Deland?
Yes.
And Locurs?
Yes.
Alright, next we have boards and commissions. We have the county road commission meeting minutes from February eighteenth and then again from March fourth. Questions, comments, or concerns on any of those? Alright, do we have motion to receive and file?
I'll make the motion that we receive and file the county road commission minutes.
Alright, motion by Trustee Deland. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Support by Treasurer Jackson. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none that motion carries. Do we have any public comments this evening?
Yes, yeah.
Hello, my name is Peter Kertcher. I'm actually, I live in Port Huron, the city of Eighteen Fifty Military Street. But as of last week, I am the new branch lead at the G. Lynn Campbell Library here in Kimball. So, I just wanted to come introduce myself. I know, and thank you guys for all the work. I am like on week two of the job. So, I'm still diving into lots of reports and kind of learning about the library. Very much in the mode of like, you know, G.K. Chesterton said, you know, don't tear down a fence before you know why it was put up. So, I'm still got a lot of learning to do, but I know you guys have been responsible for the building. I've got to read about all the amazing things you've done. I know it's a great public resource here in Kimball. We see fifty, sixty people a day come in and check out books. So, I just wanted to put some phases to names and lo and behold, when I was driving past, I was like, oh, they're having a meeting tomorrow night. What a great opportunity to just stop by and see that and kind of introduce myself and let you and the people of Kimball know that that's a great resource that's there for anybody who doesn't use the library. It's amazing how many free things you can get there. It's just a great program. Everything from, you know, books, obviously, but movies, internet help. They're doing a lot with taxes, tax forms. You name it, if there's something that you do, there's probably a way the library can help you do that. So, like I said, thank you guys for all the work that the township has put in over the years on the building here. And I look forward to getting to work with you. So, I won't take up any more time.
I was just gonna ask you, you did a lot of videos with the Port Huron Museum?
I sure did. Yeah, I can't rob a bank in this county anymore. So, that's, I had to scratch that off the list of, you know, potential jobs. Bank robber wasn't one of them. But it is a nice like county job over there. So, I can have things like health insurance, which is pretty nice, I gotta say. So, yeah, so I really look forward to it and I look forward to working with all of you and seeing all of you. So, hopefully I see your face in the library sometime because we do cool programs. Right now, they're doing snacks from around the world. So, there are about fifteen people and they're trying out snacks from South Korea for free. So, how cool is that? So, anyway, I cordially invite to come to any and all of those programs.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I could stop on my way home.
Thank you for introducing yourself. Appreciate that. Any other public comment tonight? Moving on to old business. We have no old business. We're gonna move on to new business. You can see a budget summary there. I think I had passed it out before, but just wanted to make sure that you all have that. It looks way better in color. So, I apologize that it's not in color, but some of the graphs that are in there are definitely way better in color. A little bit easier to digest because of a lot of information on those, on those graphs. I think too, it just helps explain a little bit of where, where our funding comes from or where tax dollars go for one. If you look on page thirty-five, it's pretty incredible that the majority, people walk in here and say, I paid two thousand dollars in taxes and almost none of that stays here. Almost all of that goes elsewhere. And you can see from that chart, we're just a little small sliver of that tax dollar. But we collect it. So, and then we distribute that back out to those other pieces of that pie, so to speak. But you can see our revenue sources. A lot of people talk to us about property taxes. Property taxes is a smaller portion of our, of our revenue. The majority of our revenue comes from sales tax, also known as revenue sharing. So, that big piece of the pie that's sixty-two percent or almost two-thirds of our funding comes from sales tax and revenue sharing. Thankfully, the state legislature has been much better about giving us the non-constitutional piece or the statutory piece. The constitutional piece they have to give us. The rest of that is subject to appropriation by legislature. So, we went several years where we didn't get any of that. But the legislature has been much, much better about divvying that out the way it was, the way it was intended. So... On that next page thirty-seven, you can see the expenditures by category. People often wonder what their tax dollars go to. The largest portion goes to roads. Whether that be paving a road, gravel for roads, ditching is included in that. By far, it's not even close. You can see on page thirty-seven that it's not even close that that is by far the largest portion of our tax dollars go to roads and maintaining them.
The library's in there.
Any questions on that at all?
I had a question.
Yes.
So, it seems like you're always going to bat for the township to do whatever you can to keep as much dollars here. And I'm not gonna speak for the whole board, but just me personally, just trustees in general. What can I do as a trustee to serve you better, to go to bat with you, to make things, you know what I'm saying? Like, how can I be an asset to you as a board member? So, when you're doing all this due diligence and you're being a good steward for the township, what can I as a trustee do to help you? Like, who?
Reach out to your state legislators?
Okay.
Is a big one.
Yeah.
Not so much county. Countywide, we're not, we're not appropriating a lot of money between the county and the township. But from the state level, we're doing a lot. So, being in contact with your state representative, your state senator, even your federal legislators, because they do have some discretionary spending that they can send back our way. So, just being in their ear, letting them know what, what challenges we face and where we could use help is, is definitely a plus.
Cool. Perfect. Thank you.
Alright, so we'll move on to the first resolution, which is twenty dash twelve. That's on page... It's way back there. It's gonna be on page seventy-two. So, we, we do approve these by cost center. So, I, I gave you in the packet line by line, which we've been giving you all along, is, is how we determine that particular number for the cost center. It's obviously broke down pretty specifically. We're looking at a lot of different details when we put together a budget. So, we have wage sheets and Trustee Riley had asked me and I will send everyone a copy of the wage sheet so you can see exactly what the wages are, what the benefits are, what, what the total cost of an employee is. Because that's all factored in here. And we do a lot of research with some cog in others to try to dial in those numbers the best that we can. So, the first one, resolution twenty-five dash twelve, is for the general fund. Based on that budget, we would have an excess of eight hundred and six dollars and eight cents. Right now, we have a fund balance of about nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Our target liquidity is fifty percent. So, we're well above the fifty percent level. So, that's good. With this addition of almost a thousand dollars, we'd be at nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand of the general fund. Questions on that resolution? Alright, do we have a motion to adopt the general fund appropriation, resolution twenty-five dash twelve? Motion by Trustee Riley. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Support. Any, any other questions on that? Roll call on that, please.
Riley?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Musikowski?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Grubel?
Yes.
Deland?
Yes.
Locurs?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution, excuse me, twenty-five dash thirteen is for fire millage funds? Why that meant to not go down the right way. So, this is the funds that we have a millage for for fire department. They can only be used for fire department. So, the only thing we don't typically pay out of this is the, the wages. Those we pay out of the general fund, but everything else for fire department expenditures comes from the millage fund. You can see there that we currently have a fund balance estimated at five hundred and sixty-nine thousand. This would bring it to five hundred and ninety-two thousand. Questions on that one?
I'm just gonna make a statement on that. A lot of you primarily haven't been here since the fire thing went, the fire millages went in. But that's saving us that amount of money to go towards roads and other things. That this fire, the fire department used to cost us five hundred and fifty thousand to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Now, we have a millage to cover that. So, that gives us funds to use for the roads and things.
Alright, any questions on the fire millage fund appropriations? Alright, do we have a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash thirteen?
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution twenty-five dash thirteen.
Alright, motion by Treasurer Jackson. Do we have support?
I'll support.
So, we'll go, we'll go Bowen. Trustee Bowen on that one?
Got a double one, huh?
Yeah, we did. Yeah. Alright, roll call on that, please.
Jackson?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Musikowski?
Yes.
Grubel?
Yes.
Deland?
Yes.
Locurs?
Yes.
And Riley?
Yes.
Motion, uh, resolution carries.
Alright, moving on to resolution twenty-five dash fourteen, which is parts. The current fund balance is eight thousand five eighty-four. This would be in excess of revenue over expenditures of about a hundred dollars, just under that. So, the fu- fund balance isn't gonna change much, but it would be eighty-six, sixty-two, fifty-two. Questions about that one?
Is that fifty-eight thousand up there? Is that what we're getting for the millage this year or?
Yeah, that's estimated. Yeah, pretty close to that. Yep. Any other questions on that one? Alright, do we have a motion on that?
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-five dash fourteen.
Alright, motion by Trustee Bowen. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Support by Treasurer Jackson. Any further discussion? Roll call on that, please.
Bowen?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Musikowski?
Yes.
Grubel?
Yes.
Deland?
Yes.
Locurs?
Yes.
And Riley?
Yes.
Alright, next is the liquor control fund. For those that don't know, a percentage of people that have liquor licenses, a percentage of that comes back to the local municipalities to do liquor inspections. It's, it's not a fund where we're supposed to retain a large balance. We currently do have about a fifteen thousand dollar balance in there. We did increase what we were paying our inspectors this last time and actually we used some of the fund balance. But at some point in time, we gotta make sure that we're using that and not leaving that in there. So, but in this case, we're break even is what we're estimating. So, a revenue and expenditure of about six thousand two ninety-five and that to maintain the same fund balance. Questions on that? Alright, do we have a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash fifteen?
I have so long.
Motion by Trustee Riley. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Go ahead.
Support by Trustee Bowen. Any further discussion? Alright, roll call on that one, please.
Riley?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Musikowski?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Grubel?
Yes.
Deland?
Yes.
Locurs?
Yes.
Alright, next up we have resolution twenty-five dash sixteen. That's for building fund appropriations. This is the inspectors' fund. So, anytime a builder, contractor, property owner pays for a permit, a portion of that goes back to the inspectors. And then we have office expenditures associated with maintaining that. That's what that account is for. So, all those fees have to stay in the building fund and they can't be used for anything else. In this case, we're pretty close to a break even. Right now, our fund balance is about eleven thousand five hundred, expecting an increase in fund balance of about nine hundred, which would bring us to twelve thousand four hundred in fund balance. Questions on that? Alright, roll call, uh, motion on that one, please.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash sixteen.
Alright, motion by Treasurer Jackson. Do we have support on that?
I'll support.
Support by Tr- uh, Clerk Grubel. Any further discussion? Roll call on that, please.
Jackson?
Yes.
Grubel?
Yes.
Musikowski?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Deland?
Yes.
Locurs?
Yes.
And Riley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, the next one is an appropriation for ARPA funds. So, I had a conversation with the auditors probably about a month ago and asked if we needed to have an appropriation for it because we, we hadn't adopted one. So, the first one is an appro- appropriation for this year. And then the second one is appropriation for next year because we're gonna have some balance left over. Questions on twenty-five dash seventeen? Alright, do we have a motion for that one?
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution twenty-five dash seventeen.
Alright, motion by Treasurer Jackson. Do we have support? Alright, I'll support that one. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Jackson?
Yes.
Musikowski?
Yes.
Grubel?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Deland?
Yes.
Locurs?
Yes.
And Riley?
Yes.
Alright, then the next one, resolution twenty-five dash eighteen is for this year. We have to spend the money. So, obviously, we're using all of the fund balance of that particular account to bring it down to zero. Questions on that? Alright, do we have a motion on that one?
I'll make a motion to approve, to approve resolution twenty-five dash eighteen.
Alright, motion by Treasurer Jackson. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Support by Clerk Grubel. Any further discussion? Roll call on that, please.
Jackson?
Yes.
Grubel?
Yes.
Musikowski?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Deland?
Yes.
Locurs?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, next we have our water appropriations. That's twenty-five dash nineteen. We currently have a fund balance or an estimated fund balance of about, oh, four hundred and seven million dollars. Four, four million seven hundred thousand dollars. This would bring us a net revenue of about four thousand in the water fund. So, that, that fund balance is gonna change a whole lot. Questions on that one? Alright, we have a motion for resolution twenty-five dash nineteen.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-five dash nineteen.
Alright, motion by Trustee Bowen. Do we have support? Support by Trustee Riley. Any further discussion? Roll call on that, please.
Bowen?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Musikowski?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Grubel? Grubel?
Yes.
Deland?
Yes.
Locurs?
Yes.
All right, next we have our sewer appropriations, twenty-five dash twenty. We're close to a break even on that. I do show a current fund balance of four million, uh, six hundred and seventy-three thousand. Would anticipate a small loss in value of thirty-one thousand, which would bring a fund balance down to four million five, six forty-two. Questions on that one?
Is the loss just a depreciation?
It is, yes, we'll, we'll have cash balance increases on that. Any other questions on that? Do we have a motion on that one?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash twenty.
All right, we have a motion, do we have support?
I'll support.
Okay, support by trustee Bowen, any further discussion? Roll call on that, please?
Jackson?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Muzikowski?
Yes.
Grubel?
Yes.
Deland?
Yes.
Locurs?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next, and I know that we've already adopted a resolution for this, but after talking with Kim Harmer, she recommended that we adopt it after the public hearing. So, we're just gonna adopt pretty much the same resolution. All of the things that we need are in there, that the DNR will need in, in having proof that we've adopted this resolution, but she did recommend that we adopt it after the public hearing, so. Questions on that? So, that's Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-one. Do we have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution dash twenty-five dash twenty-one.
All right, motion by treasurer Jackson, do we have support?
I'll support.
Support by trustee Deland, any further discussion? Roll call on that, please?
Jackson?
Yes.
Deland?
Yes.
Muzikowski?
Yes.
Grubel?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Locurs?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so the next item is cell phones and FOIA. I just wanted to bring some clarification, I know there were some countenance made at the last meeting that, you know, your personal pictures and other things would be foiable. If you did any business on your personal cellphone, that is not correct. State law is pretty specific on what is foiable. You can see the MCL reference there, fifteen dash two-three-two I. The factors, it was, it was an interesting read for me. The language of law states that it has to be written as prepared, owned, used, possessed, and retained by a public body. And there's actually been some lawsuits related to FOIA, where municipalities had actually denied even business functionality of cell phones, and won in court. So, to me personally, I think if we're doing township business on a cellphone, I think that should be foiable. But your personal information is absolutely not foiable. Along with that, I would recommend, if you can see down at the bottom of page one oh two, we have the ability to add township email accounts for each of you. My recommendation is that we do that, as opposed to using your personal accounts. It's gonna cost us three hundred dollars a year, but it at least separates your personal emails from the township emails. I don't know how you all feel about that, so.
I started my own, I don't know how that works. I mean, I just started a Gary Locurs, Campbell Township email, and it's completely separate, so. It was for.
I think starting them is a good idea.
Does anybody else? I could set them up, it's pretty easy to set them up, so we'll, we'll just do that. If you guys use them, I, I think it, it'd be helpful to separate them. If you already have one that's separated, then, you know, you can use whichever one you want, but.
Yeah.
I think that would just be, be helpful on that. One oh four, page one oh four, cellphone usage by township employees. So, back in two thousand nine, there were a lot of lawsuits related to cell phones, and a lot of municipalities and businesses were providing, basically, business-owned cell phones to employees, and so were municipalities. However, there's a lot of liability related to that. You know, if the person's talking on the cellphone, you provided the cellphone, then they get in an accident, someone gets hurt, now you've provided them a cellphone, and so there were some liability concerns. So, we quit doing that. However, we did agree to pay, 'cause we do want some of our employees to be able to use a cellphone. So, that included, at the time, the DPW foreman, fire chief, building inspector, and clerk. Myself, I give out my cellphone number all the time, so.
I do not get a stifle.
You don't? You're supposed, you, it's in there, you would, so.
I've chosen not to.
So, and, and the reason for that was, we want these people to be able to use their cellphones and be available. You know, we want the building inspector and ordinance enforcement to be available to people, even when he's not in the office. Same thing with the DPW foreman, if we have something going on out in the field, you know, we want them to be available. Same thing with the fire chief. So, that's why we chose to go in that direction. I think that's a good thing, I think it's a service to the people that we serve, that these people are available. And I, I think we should continue in that direction, so. Uh, next one is department heads and board member communications. It was said that it's illegal for department heads to contact board members. That's not correct. Department heads can absolutely reach out to you, as I say in here, as long as they're not polling. You know, they, they can't, they can't contact you to find out how you're gonna vote on a matter. However, they can call to inform you, and I think that's a great thing. I think our, our department head should do that. If they have something on the agenda, they should keep you informed as to what that, that item is. If you have questions, you can ask questions. I think it just makes us a better board if we all come in here informed on decisions. So, yes, a department head can absolutely contact a board member, share agenda items, however, they, they cannot be polling you, so to speak. Next up, we've got elected official required work hours, 'cause this came into question. So, there are no, no specific required work hours for elected officials set by state law. Typically, the work schedule depends on what the township needs are, what the official's duties are, and what local policies are. I included in there what the requirements are as far as statutory duties for myself, the clerk, and the treasurer. You can see a list of those. You can also tell that we do a heck of a lot more than what our statutory requirements are. But that's, that's what they are there, so. There is no required work hours, either in the township ordinances or by state law. Questions on any of that? All right, next up, I have our final budget adjustment for the year. We did, we did shift a lot of our staffing around as far as where we were charging it, so we needed to make some adjustments. Normally, what we do, and you'll see in the spreadsheet that I'll give you with wages, we have a breakdown of where the wages go. If we change that for some reason during the year, which we did this year, then it kinda messes everything up, and so we have to make an adjustment for that. We also adopted or approved some expenditures that weren't originally part of the budget, and so you'll see some of those things in there. It's not really a whole lot, there's just a few things there. And then some of our, some of our expenditures weren't nearly as much as we thought. We were hoping, like, the Port Huron Parks and Rec, more people would have participated in it, and not as many people did participate. So, we were able to reduce that one. Other que- any questions on that? All right, do we have a motion to approve the budget adjustment? All right, we have a motion by trustee Riley, do we have support? Trustee Deland will support. Any further discussion? Roll call on that, please?
Riley?
Yes.
Deland?
Yes.
Muzikowski?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Grubel?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
And Locurs?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we did have one application for a fire board, which was Nathan Dahmer. I would recommend that we not approve it. We did not retain Mr. Dahmer as a firefighter. We also had to trespass Mr. Dahmer for his conduct at a meeting. His conduct was non-cooperative, we had to call the sheriff's department out. I don't think it's a good idea to then put him on the fire board personally. Any other comments on that? I'll make a motion that we not approve this application for fire board.
I support.
Any further discussion? Roll call on that, please?
Muzikowski?
Yes.
Jackson, Bowen?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Grubel?
Yes.
Deland?
Yes.
Locurs?
No.
Riley?
Yes.
All right, so next we have the, it's Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two, it's one that I handed out to you. The state of Michigan just wants us to kinda verify that the St. Clair Kennel Club is actually a viable operating organization, which they are. We have several members of our community, the Michiners over on Broad Axe have been a part of that organization for a long time. So, they need our, they're actually licensed or organized or whatever. Their official place of business is Campbell Township, let's put it that way. So, but they've been around for a long time, they host a pretty big dog show out at the Goodos County Park. And so, we're, our role in this is just verifying that, yes, they are a viable entity, and we would recommend approval of their charitable gaming license. Questions on that? All right, do we have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion that we adopt Resolution twenty-five, or we're gonna call this twenty-two?
Twenty-two, yeah.
Yep, twenty-five, twenty-two.
All right, motion by trustee Deland, do we have support?
I'll support.
Support by trustee Bowen, any further discussion? All right, roll call on that, please?
Deland?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Muzikowski?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Grubel?
Yes.
Locurs?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
All right, any other audience participation? All right? Oh, yeah, you would come up here to the microphone.
Okay, the Mayor forty-eight, they tried to, and I have a new chemical. And as you know, Muzik- uh, Muzikowski, you cannot trespass on public property. So, you might want to check on your statute. And then on your email about your investigation, why don't you investigate, so we need you in everything? I gave you a state email.
So, our, I was.
Your policy is not public. You told me to send you this stuff, you investigated. I sent you the main one, and then you want me to continue to give you all the information, instead of using it in the work. You acknowledge that you knew about it in the hallway of the meeting about Fire Department, Fire Department CJ.
Not really sure which part of it you're having trouble with. So, on March fifth, I emailed you and said, thank you for the documentation, which, by the way, it's just screenshots, some of them multiples. You don't make any accusations, somebody unnamed makes accusations in those emails. And that's not even the person making the accusation, they're relating an accusation of somebody else who made an accusation. So, we're kinda like the REO Speedwagon song. I heard it from a friend, heard it from another, heard it from another, right? So, the documentation.
You're trying, you're trying to make this called hearsay, it's not hearsay.
Can I, can I finish, or are you gonna interrupt me?
You're gonna be a dick, like you are right now.
Well, first of all, you're very disrespectful, and I don't appreciate it.
You work for me, I don't work for you.
I understand that, but there's, there.
I don't have any respect at all.
You don't, you can act however you want, you're right. All right, so I, I wrote on March fifth, thank you for the documentation. Please list your accusations, so that we can investigate the accusations and tie them into the documentation you submitted. You didn't reply. March seventh, I sent to. March seventh. Excuse me, March seventh, I sent another one. I haven't received a written list of the accusations you believe need to be investigated. I cannot proceed until you provide a written claim. Once your written claim is received, I will conclude the investigation within five days. I sent another one on March eleventh. I received your original email on March fifth. Since then, I've asked you to provide a list of the accusations you would like investigated. I did so on March fifth, shortly after the original email, then again on March seventh. To date, I have yet to receive your list of accusations. Unfortunately, I cannot proceed until you provide a list of the accusations you are making. The list of accusations that you are making will start the investigatory pro- process, at which point the township will have five business days to respond to your claims. However, this process will not start until the list of your accusations you are making are received from you. So, you responded to that on March twelfth. As you mentioned, that you had received the first email, why don't you start there with the investigation? And when I receive the rest of my FOIA, I will add with policy that it's been broken. So, I responded to you again, because our policy requires that the person making the accusation put their accusations in writing. So, as you. Man, I am not making this up.
Then where is it?
So, I go into it again on March. Can I finish?
No.
On March twelfth, okay, go ahead.
So, where is?
We'll stop the meeting for you, go ahead.
Where is the policy?
It's in the office, you're more than welcome to stop in, I'll give it to you.
You told me to send you the email, I sent you the email of what happened, what I have a huge issue up there, and.
You sent me an email of, unless you're the email, unless you're emailing yourself, which, I mean, could be, I don't know. You sent me an email from somebody else, making accusations of them saying that someone else had made accusations. I mean, we're not even. I'm asking you to make a determinate, which accusations are you claiming? Because that email was not from you, it was from somebody else. So, I'll go back to my.
It was from a group of firefighters from the fire department, and I have all their names, but I will not disclose that, because.
It's fine, I'm not asking you for that. March twelfth, as you know, the first email did have attachment with emails between you and one unnamed person, but there is no, there's absolutely no body to the email you sent. You just sent attachments with no, no body. You're, you personally did not give me, you personally did not give me in writing accusations you were claiming, as is required. I need the accusations that you are claiming in writing from you. The email with attachments does not meet this requirement. If you are confused about what is required, or you don't understand the requirement, let me know. The easiest way to meet the requirement is to send an email stating the accusations that you are claiming. This would go into the body of the email. That's all you have to do. But you don't wanna qualify, you don't wanna cooperate. It's not a runaround loop, it's not. No, it's not.
So, where is the policy of Campbell Township that says that it has to be written out? Because your website is still showing twenty-one, twenty-two budget, because you guys gave your.
If you, if you just search, if you just search budget, it's, the other budgets show up in there, it's just not on that page.
You searched budget, it comes up twenty-one, twenty-two.
You searched budget, it comes up twenty-two. I, believe me, I tested it, so. All right, so let me get you the admin, I'm gonna get you the, I'm gonna give you, if you would quit interrupt. Man, you, I can see why there were issues with you on the fire department.
Okay, this, I'm wanting to FOIA this, because it's called defamation from a township supervisor.
Okay, so I'm gonna give you the administrative policies, uh, number that you have to comply with, that you are, at this point, refusing to comply with, I'm not sure why.
I'm not refusing to comply.
You are.
You're saying there's policy, show the policy, and it's, it's easy.
It is easy, I've, I've asked you, I've asked you to follow that five times now, and you're refusing.
Without being shown, it's two different things. This policy has to be, you can show the policies, or write it up, no issue.
Well, it seems like it's been, you never said anything about policy until today.
You never said anything about policy until I sent you the email.
Despite five, no, I've told you that you needed to have it in writing. You just refused to do it.
You want to pull up the, the meetings from last two weeks ago, where you said, send it to me? Send me the email that you got? I did that.
All you had to do was cooperate, I don't, I don't understand why you don't want to.
I'm not doing your job, just like how.
I asked you to do my job.
Well, I beg to differ with that statement, because he does more work than you actually realize what he does. Rob does. He knows where the ins and outs are of this whole community, and whole county, and whole state, so. He can probably quote half the laws.
No, I'll find it in here and I'll, I'll get it over to you. I just read it last week, so. But if you would just cooperate. I mean, I don't know what your accusations are because it's not even your, it's not even your emails. I mean.
Did you, you acknowledge that you knew what happened? After.
There were a lot of things in those emails. A lot of things in those emails. I'm not acknowledging all of the stuff that's in those emails.
You acknowledged you knew what happened before it's sent you the email. You, you said in the hallway out there when I said it happened to Firefighter CJ, you're like, yes, I heard all about it, what happened.
I knew about that one.
Why did you, that's, that's that email. Why did you?
No, there's other things in, this is, this is why. You, you understand now why we want it in writing. Because there were a lot of other things in those emails beyond that.
I was gonna talk about one thing in that email.
So. Well, that's why it's not clear what exactly your accusations are. And all I'm asking is that you put it in writing what your accusations are, and you're refusing to do it, which is, it, it makes no sense. Why would you act like that?
Act like what? That I gave you?
Why would you not cooperate?
Why you don't want, you don't want to read the email and then figure out what happened? Investigate?
No, I want you to tell me what your, what your, what your accusations are. See, you're, you're, you're contradicting already what's in the emails. You're saying. One thing and it's not what's all is in the email. And that's why we need it in writing, just so that there's clarity on exactly what the accusations are. And for some reason you refuse it. It's just weird.
Enjoy your next four years because this is your last time you'll ever be a supervisor in the township.
Thank you. Thank you.
Could I FOIA that camera there because that is public records?
Sure.
Just like, they probably, I can FOIA stuff from the fire department.
Sure.
Just all public record. You guys have been refusing.
That was, believe me, we, before we refuse any FOIA, we consult with our attorney, which we did.
Yeah, cameras, cameras that are in a public building, in a public area is called FOIable.
No. No, it's not.
Yes, it is. I, I FOIA, I FOIA this. Sheriff's Department cameras, I FOIAed a whole bunch of other, municipality cameras. It's FOIable.
Alright. Okay.
So.
It's not what our attorney said, so.
Yeah, so do you mind my, who is your guys' attorney? So can I have my attorney contact you guys' attorney?
It's, uh, Gary Fletcher's office, so Al Francis.
Gary Fletcher.
Al Francis.
Oh, that's fine. He's, he's already dealing with the federal lawsuit about FOIA cameras and not giving out FOIAs. So you guys want to be part of that lawsuit too, that's fine.
Okay.
I, I would be more than happy to, to add to that one because he can't even protect the city.
So when can I expect the email from you with your accusations?
As soon as I get my, the rest of my FOIAs. Which I will contact my attorney, which I will contact Gary, and Gary will just tell you guys to give it up because it is by law you have to give it up.
Give what up?
The cameras that are in a public building.
Okay, so that wasn't even my question. My question for you is, when are you going to supply? When are you going to supply the accusations in writing that you are making?
Did I just not answer? It's like, as soon as I get the rest of my FOIAs?
Okay.
Just like what was in the email? I'll get, I'll get the rest of my FOIAs.
Okay.
Simple. By the way, I'm gonna get the rest of my FOIAs.
Okay, why couldn't you say that?
Did you read the last, read the email? Part of the last one you sent me, I said, why don't you investigate the email I've sent to you? And I'll give you the rest once I receive the FOIAs. Is that not what I said?
You did. You had an indication that you were going to supply some of it and then later on, uh, add additional to that.
Were you indicating that was a part of the, I gave you?
You did. You said it right in your email. You said it.
Do you think you're smart or you're not?
I'm not trying to be smart. I just want your cooperation so that we can move forward with this. And you want to fight it at every tooth and nail. It just makes no sense.
Push the chairman. I believe there's a time limit.
Yeah, there's a time limit, but by law you actually gotta have a clock.
We don't have to have a clock. We don't have to have a clock.
No, 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 please don't interrupt me.
No, you work for me. You know, you work for the township, for the citizen.
I don't work for you. I work for.
You work for the citizen.
That's right.
And I am a citizen of the township.
But you know what? I don't have a problem with you, but you're gonna start one if you don't stop.
What are you gonna do?
All I.
What are you gonna do, Ms. Riley?
What is your problem with, we are a new board. Like, we weren't even here when any of this happened.
What is your problem, pal? All I was gonna say is we've had, there's a time limit on how long anybody stands up. Not you, not her, not him.
Yeah.
At the podium. And after that, if it is not solved, then there's private meeting can be set up.
But this will be, this is a, this is a public issue.
But not at the open hearing for the.
And for some reason.
Some reason you can't help but interrupt people. Why don't you just wait?
For some reason, you guys, they, they. Because, because you know, the thing is when you work for the citizens, the citizens don't take directives and don't need to listen to what you're saying.
But the citizens should respect.
Oh, really?
You get that.
You know what, pal? You have really stepped on it, haven't you? You know what? I've been in this type of work for many years. And from the county to the other townships, et cetera. And the one thing you must learn is when people come in is be polite with them. That person, if he's standing up there and is not being polite, should be excused. There's also time limit. There is.
But there's no, there's no law. There's no law the way that states that I have to speak or respect you guys in any which way. On the First Amendment, I could tell you guys are all go F off. There's nothing you guys can do.
You'd be all alone here with the guy in uniform if you keep that language up. I'll guarantee it because I'll make the call.
They can't, they can't remove somebody from a public meeting.
Yes, they can.
Okay, so let's get to the, let's just, let's just end this. Do you have anything else to say?
I'm scared of you, Mr..
Mister Dammer. I don't care if you're scared.
Mister Dammer, do you have anything else?
What I want, I don't want you to be scared. I want you to be a normal person talking at a meeting, and you've overstepped your bounds now.
I didn't overstep any boundaries.
You tell me, you don't have to be removed. You start using the F word, you will be removed.
It's called, it's called your First Amendment right. I could tell a cop.
No, no, no. Well, if, if you have the cop in stuff, you.
Yeah, that's what you think.
No, that's what I do believe. You don't F people.
That's called the. You can, I can do what I want.
Well, I'm sorry, pal.
Mister Dammer, I think that's. Do you?
I have rights and I don't have to listen to that.
And the, the nice thing about being a public setting, there is no right of expectation of First Amendment.
Okay, Mister Dammer, do you have anything else to say regarding your situation?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold Gary Fletcher. I'm my attorney.
Okay.
Man, it doesn't matter. I can hear it. I'll.
Alright, any, uh, other public comment tonight? Alright, we'll move on to officers' reports. Um, I did meet with, uh, our new county commissioner, uh, last week, uh, Mr. Phelix. So we had a really good conversation about, uh, a lot of things going on. Just so you guys know, the, um, landfill did lose a lot of revenue from the, um, loss of the Canadian trash. So they did not have the nine hundred thousand dollar funding available, uh, for the roads that they normally supply. So they did take that from the county's general fund. It's their intent to, at least at this point, continue to fund that. Um, so that was, that was good news. Also discussed, uh, what's happening at the landfill. Obviously, it's, it's difficult for the county to make comments or statements when there's pending lit- legis- uh, litigation. Uh, so they have to be careful about what they say, but, um, my concern is that there's been no accountability for what happened out there, at least at this point. But I think they're trying not to make any, any moves until after the litigation has been resolved satisfactorily, so. What else did we talk about? Uh, basically, I talked about the five things that we had put down for, uh. Mister Samasco, so we'll see what Mister Samasco says, you know, at the MTA, but, um, EDA, uh, they did vote to discontinue, uh, funding the EDA. Um, and it primarily was just, uh, they weren't getting the answers from EDA that they, they wanted to get, so. It looks like they were, uh, going to, uh, move towards, uh, Michigan State University Extension, uh, which does have some economic development expertise. Some of you may know Andy Northrup. Uh, he's, he's involved quite a bit with that, so. They're looking to do something with that. They're waiting on a proposal from, uh, the Extension Office, uh, to continue some of that. But they would, at this point, be able to take that three hundred thousand dollars and allocate it to something else because the, uh, MSUE thing would not be anywhere near that kind of dollar amount, so. So I thought that was good news. I made to talk to him about NMDC, which is Next Michigan Development Corporation, which we are still a member of. Us being in that organization gave us some economic tools that normally we cannot get. So, uh, if we ever needed to or wanted to, we could do an LDFA or some other things. Um, I'm not sure at this point that we would, but, um, it gave us that opportunity where the size farm municipality just doesn't do that. However, if the county pulls out of that, which they're talking about doing, then I don't think it would be advantageous for us to remain because now we're not contiguous, uh, with the other counties that are involved, so. Uh, I would think that, and we'll bring it back once they make a decision. We can talk about it again some more, so. Uh, that's all I got for now. Clerk Rubel?
I had a resident contact me the other day. Um, she suggested that we put a farmer's market at the bottom of the Waddams, where the Black River property is, maybe in the next year or two. I thought that was a good suggestion.
That was a good idea.
I like that.
Yeah.
I do like it.
You too.
I am receiving applications for the full-time park position. They're coming in by the loads, so we've got some really nice leads. Um, our grass cutter should be starting April first for the cemetery cleanup. Uh, newsletter is gonna be going out. If you have the information that you want to be submitted, you need to let it, to give it to me for that. Uh, Rob, we need to set up a spring cleanup date.
Yep.
Okay. Because that kind of determines newsletter, how I.
Good.
I send it out. Okay? It's gonna be bright pink this year. Um. Uh, I save some money for the township, the DPW phone system that's over in the other building. We're going to take that system out. Um, we're gonna drop AT&T in our new phone system that we have here because we have eight, we've got internet over there. We're able to, um, submit it into our system, so we're able to save some monies. The cemetery cleanup, the dumpster will be out there until the thirty-first of this month. And, um, I'm also putting bids out in the next week or two for the library cleaning. It's quite, the person that's been doing it has been doing it for quite a few years. And I had a real nice, um, meeting with Allison from, from the library, and we spoke about the, the cleaning, and so we're gonna be putting out bids for that. Okay, that's it.
Treasurer Jackson?
Don't have a lot. Uh, one thing we're looking into is, uh, some type of software for keep track of the cross connections. I don't know if we want to get involved in it or not. It amounts to fifteen hundred dollars a year. Or we can pay it, uh, a hundred fifty or a hundred, a forty-nine dollars per month. So if it's something you think we want to give and make it easier for the clerk, for the person that's doing that. And they can go back quick and find out why they did that without having to get double shots of getting it done. I don't know whether anybody thinks about that, but it would be more efficient to, to do it. Eagle is on us all the time to make sure we check everything, so. So think about it. I'll put it in next, uh, the next agenda and we'll go from there. Financials, cash distribution. Which primaries, the general fund and things like that go in there is two million, two hundred thirty thousand, three hundred and five dollars and seventy-one cents. The tax account, which, uh, today, right now, is saying that one million, two hundred fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-one cents. But there's some distribution checks out there in the mail. It's gonna take that down to less than a hundred thousand. Trust and agency, the payroll account, performance bond account, that's sixty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and one cent. Say, well, how do they, how does that, those funds get into that fund? Well, it's, we know how much pay is going out so that each one of those paid towards the trust of agency. You transfer the funds to put it in there enough to cover the payroll. Utility account, which is water and sewer account, one million, sixty-three thousand, one hundred ninety-four dollars and three cents. Brings it to a total of four million, six hundred twelve thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and six cents. You add the CDs to it, uh, which average roughly two hundred and sixty thousand, and then one, one hundred thousand dollar one. Brings our actual cash amount available to us right now at five million, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-four cents. Taxes we've distributed. We collected ten, ten million, four hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which is primarily. And we've, uh, distributed ten million, four hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty cents. Like I say, there's funds in there that will take that figure down con- considerably. In fact, it's very close. Yeah, ten thousand, four hundred and ninety-five, but some of that I held back because Marysville owes us the money for a twenty-twenty-three, uh, adjustment. Other than that, anybody get, have any questions on anything? Uh, wanna know where your tax bills, tax money went? Two hundred and fifty thousand went to seniors. Drug Task Force got a hundred and seventy-five thousand. The library, uh, we'll be glad to hear that we've distribut- just, so three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars to the library fund in the county. Parks, a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Uh, RESA, the intermediate education, sixty thousand. The special education, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand. The vocational education, five hundred, or two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. The college, we donated five hundred and ninety thousand to veterans, the important people of this township. We've, uh, supplied thirty-one thousand for some of their functions. County roads, uh, have received seventy-eight thousand dollars to work with. That's just for the roads and not for the county. Emergency medical services received a hundred and fifty-six thousand. Our fire millage has received four hundred and sixty-eight thousand. County operating has received, uh, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand. On the winter taxes, a total of one million, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand on the county operation fund. And state ed, it's got almost two million supplied by the taxpayers. Then you have your various schools that also have funds in there. I won't, uh, go any further than that. But anyone who know what was collected, you can always come in and get this printout. Like you say, we don't get much of it. A township operating was at two hundred and thirty-three thousand out of ten and a half million dollars. So that's all we get, plus the revenue sharing.
Right, anything else, Treasurer Jackson?
No, that's it.
Trustee Locers?
I've been doing some research lately and, um, the sewage issue at the landfill is a problem. Sewage and general is an issue. I'm gonna reach out to Robert. There's this thing called BioCrude. They can actually take human waste in a short period. They can make fossil fuels. So I'm gonna reach out to him, maybe do some collabing with the other township, uh, other county commissioners. No reason we can't take waste and turn it into fuel and make money for the county. I mean, Bohm had that great idea just to dump waste all over the hill and pray that it creates something. But there's actual people turning waste into fossil fuels that, done under a microscope, it looks just chemically like the fossil fuels that they're pulling out of the corolla. So I think that'd be, uh, it might cost some money, but I mean.
I think your callers would be happy with that.
Yeah, for sure, but I mean, if the county can make money off of everybody's waste to where we're generating, kind of like the whole, uh, medicinal marijuana. You're making money out of nothing. You're making tax revenue out of something that's just something people want, so.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Anything else, trustee Locers?
That's it.
Trustee Deland?
Um, I was just wondering if you could tell us how your ditch tour went?
Uh, we're not doing that until, we, that's not happening for two more weeks, I think.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a couple weeks out. It's, yeah, we don't, we usually don't do it until after we've had the spring law, then we can get out there and really take a look.
So you miss all the flooding?
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah. Everybody said ditch had water.
I must have misunderstood. I thought you were doing it.
I think, I want to say it's April ninth.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Trustee Bowen?
Thanks, today.
Trustee Riley?
Yeah, I've had, uh, a few people, just because it's been written a little bit about, uh, the new one on Waddams at, at, uh, Park, you were talking about building.
Yeah.
But, uh, I've had nothing but good comments. I haven't had anybody say that it's a bad idea. Sure, it's gonna cost something, but it'd be good for the citizens.
Yeah.
Especially if, uh, with people, uh, with the, uh, kayaks and with, with kids and that, and the parking is a problem along there right now. You know, I mean, uh, you're risking your neck to pull in and out of that spot. But, uh, yeah, I think it's good. I've heard a lot of good things.
That's goo- good to hear. Uh, just an interesting comment on the parking. If you go to the Blue A's of Saint Clair website, they actually tell you to park there, so.
Is that right?
Yeah, I said, that's not a good idea. Yeah, park at the base of the bridge. Yeah, I said, that's not a good idea, yeah, park at the base of the bridge, I'm like, man, that's not a good idea.
Yeah. Not good at all.
So. Thank you for that feedback, appreciate that, alright, uh, nothing else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion that you adjourn at seven thirty-two.
Alright, do we have support?
Four.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? We are adjourned. No, actually, it's pretty boring, actually, to be honest with you, there's usually none. So, well, no, I, I, I saw, she, she told me that you were coming, I'm like, wait a second now.
Sir, sir.
I had had lunch with Alison both morning and evening.
Watch, you don't step back. I, I did that once, ended up out there.
I had had lunch with Alison both morning and evening, so I knew that you were.
Oh, okay. Just the last four years.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good, yeah.
I'm the person that you contacted, you may have a call.
That was one of the other things, I wanna show, I figured, I wish they'd say.
Yeah.
Ask for the new toilets.
From there?
I need a new toilet. I will install it, but if you can get a floor, that'll be a victory.
Has the fire department been?
I have, um, they're on my list, I know they've come over, I just haven't.
Okay. The stuff hanging from the ceiling?
Oh, we took care of it, that was one of the things that they, was already done by the time I got there, so I won't take credit for it, but.
And then, um, your storage? Or whatever, um, real estate, I'll come over and talk to you on it.
Okay, yeah, anytime, I'm there, you know, thirty hours at least, it's, it's the code, I've been, uh, functionally running things for, you know, a couple of months.
I'll make sure.
So you're doing anything with the museum still, or no?
No, I, I thought last June, I kinda changed my job, it was something, it was kinda bothering me, it was one of those things of like, well, we're gonna move you from salary to hourly, and, like, also now your job is, when this, instead of that. I can, I can, the writing on the wall kind of thing, and just say, alright, so, um, I've been doing, uh, lecture.
Oh, okay.
Also, I'll give you guys one of these, it's not, actually have like official, uh, library cards, I don't know if you have one, but that is, um, that's my.
Okay. Gotcha, okay, great.
Cause that's my side hustle, my lectures, I go to libraries, all the, all the senior centers.
What do you lecture on?
History mostly, uh, I love maritime history, my wife is a lighthouse keeper in Portland.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that.
She runs Fort Crash, like, uh, I do automotive history, so that's my race car in the park.
I was gonna say, that was pretty cool, when I pulled in here, I'm like, man, who is that?
If it's above like fifty degrees, it breaks.
Right, right, yeah, so true, so true.
That's actually what my lecturing was always to, I stood, take my hat, and like, that's my grandfather, he was up on.
Okay.
And, I was like, no, no project, I'm just trying to ask for a while, believe it or not, the state of Michigan, if you look at, you know, it's, it's a lot, so, in nineteen seventy-one Volkswagen, there's like Volkswagen, Frayon, Ford parts, Chevy parts, a lot of different pieces, but.
That is a hard time with the drive, yes, exactly.
I'm always right, so.
Well, I'll go aboard, cause I had to have you over the board.
Yeah, absolutely, anytime, or when.
So I don't know if you know the history, but your library used to be that little back room there, that used to be library, so when my kids were little, no, it was dark and dungee, and we would go in there into these little narrow aisles, and we'd get books out, you know, back in, back in the day, so. Then we, uh, we built this building before I got an office, so shortly thereafter.
Oh, so was that, was the larger part of the town?
It was a meeting room, yeah, so the offices were across the street, and the fire, fire hall's been remodeled since then, and it's, so.
Cause I'm picking up a lot of it, I'm a quick, fast, little, when it comes to this, I'm picking it up, so. I'm.
Yeah, yeah, hey there, what's going on?
Anyway, I'm sure you've had your hour, I got tired of working.
Oh, well, you own the business, so I mean.
Yes, sounds good.
We'll establish.
Alrighty.
Like I said.
You got it, you got it. I appreciate that, thank you.
Good to see you, man. Congrats on the new spot here.
Are you gonna be down there this weekend?
Down where?
Are you gonna be down at the convention center?
You're guys gonna be there, right?
Yeah.
Awesome.
I was bummed when you left.
Yeah, we're pretty excited, so last show of the year.
Were you let go?
You might do nobody, I'm not sure, I'm thinking about it.
Alright, what's your, what's your number?
We don't want to go anything outside of nine to five. Oh, yeah. I worked all the Memorial Day weekend, and then the next weekend, it was like, win's in, I didn't have to work, C-100, I was like, that's all I'm surprised, you were, you're gonna be written, I was like, okay, I don't wanna go down this road, I'm sorry, you know. I'll tell you what's that over at Ryan's. I bet you, I, I, I had already talked, I had talked to, so, CJ. You were creating a lot of clients, I know, for example, forever, so when they. Yes. Well, anything, you gotta have that thing, you know, you were pushing us, yeah, like that beard. That's not, that's. I know, you got a good hundred plus. Good to see you, Tom. Anyway, I will, alright, like I said, it's great meeting you guys, yeah. Him to speak on his behalf, a lot of him, I do not think he do it, though, at Murphy's. Alright, well, and so, I'm.
Interesting.
My short-term goal is to follow, my long-term goal, someday, got my, we're gonna pay for it. That'd be nice. It's good to play in the spring.
Yeah, alright, I appreciate it, alright.
The next meeting.
We're in two, April first, I believe.
April Fool's Day.
April Fool's Day, exactly, right.
I didn't know about this meeting until last minute, my schedule was. Same time, six thirty, right?
Yeah, yep.
I believe she have told you about a hammer.
Yeah, yeah.
Six thirty, I'll be here next minute, for sure.
Yeah, that sounded really interesting, I, I mean, you know, and everyone's a little bit, so everyone's a little bit gun shy, just because of what happened with the other thing, right, so.
It's super.
Do we, are we there Friday? Are there Friday, Saturday, Sunday, right? What time is it Friday?
Well, what I, what got me thinking, Friday, you may wanna check something for setup day.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think everyone's got like a slot in the door, you are in the building, to bring everything in through those overhead doors, so I think the further in you are.
Right, yeah.
I gotta see, I gotta see if I get my stuff in there.
When I start, I'm starting over. You have ring ears in a trailer.
Um, he rolls it in.
Oh, he does?
Yeah.
Here in the evening, it's that overhead door.
Yeah, it's not that big a unit, but I mean, it's, I've only got like a six-foot area.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, you're selling bottles there, too?
Yeah, I have the bottles. So I was asking, so I was asking if you were gonna be there, I've got a new one, it's called Temptation, and you guys would really like it, it's really nice and tall, it's a dry, it's very, very good, it just turned out, it's one of the best ones we've made.
Scrub.